Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we are convening. I'm sorry. Today, we're convening the Baltimore City Council Committee of a whole to discuss LO 21-11: Citywide Resources Impact to Fells Point, A Response and Strategy. I'm Council President Nick Mosby. Today, I am joined by Councilmember John Bullock, Councilmember Zeke Cohen, Councilmember Chairman Robert Stokes, Councilmember Antonio Glover, as well as... Sorry if I missed one of the council members. Today, oh, sorry, Chairman Conway. I think that I skipped over you, Chairman Conway. There we go, Chairman Conway. Today, in the chamber, I am joined by Legislative Services Mr. Green, as well as Ms. Marguerite. So, they are holding us, Ms. Marguerite Karen, they're holding us down here in the chambers. On the mayor's end, on the administration side, we have, let me go through the list. Natasha Mahu from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, Nina Thunemelis from Mayor's Office of Government Relations, Sunny Snitzer, Deputy Mayor of Public Safety, Tavon Braxton from Department of Transportation, Liam Davis from Department of Transportation, Monique Brown from Baltimore Police Department, Michelle Wurzberger from Baltimore Police Department, Nicholas Blindi from the Liquor Board, Marcia Collins from DPW, and Janelle Mummy from DPW. The point of the hearing, as we all know, and we've seen over and time and time again, some of the concerns and issues that played out in Fells Point, some of the concerns that were from the residents, as well as the business owners of Fells Point, and the administration took immediate action to help curb the concerns and address the concerns of the community. With that, and the type of force and the type of administration that was provided to the Fells Point community, knowing that Baltimore City historically has issues of crime, particularly in these months, the communities in which that crime took place was really concerned about the level of resources that was provided there, but not necessarily set as a precedent for when they experienced violence. I know that we saw a mass shooting yesterday, and with that, community members were reaching out to city council members, asking us not only if they'll see that same level of service from the city of Baltimore, but the impacts that it has on those particular communities. So, we appreciate the administration for joining on with us today to just kind of, one, walk over that plan, two, talk about the impact that plan has citywide, and three, just provide to the citizens of Baltimore kind of the next steps as it relates to us dealing with the issues of crime in our city. So, I believe I'm going to call on Sunny first, is that right, Sunny? All right, well, Sunny, it's your, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So first, I want to share how much I appreciate the opportunity to join with you all today, to be able to answer any questions that anyone has and discuss kind of the events of the past few weeks. So again, Council President Mosby, members of the council, thank you for offering the opportunity for us to come here today. As you know, Baltimore City Agency Heads are regularly making decisions on how to deploy and redeploy resources throughout the city. While we regularly move resources to address an ever-changing landscape of challenges, rarely do we share exactly what those resource moves look like. This is a combination, as you would expect, of things like not revealing exactly where investigative or other resources may be present, and also giving us kind of the flexibility to be able to adapt at the drop of a hat. For example, Council President Mosby, as you mentioned earlier, yesterday, we suffered a tragic mass shooting in West Baltimore, where six people were shot, including one fatally. This shooting, you know, completely changed what resources were deployed to this area, including a flood of DPW resources to assist with cleaning and additional increased police presence in that area. So, we like to remain flexible and adaptable to situations as they unfold. Also, I have to apologize in advance, I'm sitting in my car in advance of a safety walk at Mondomin Mall, so I apologize if my audio quality is not great, but I'll do my best to keep kind of background noise out. So, you know, what I would share is after the two shooting incidents during the early morning hours of June 6th, in which three people were struck by gunfire in Fells Point, city officials were asked to publicly report out on what resources may be available in the area to address violence and several other concerns for the following weekend and going forward. This public forum, on which more than 700 people were present, we, you know, we held a public forum to share what resources were currently being used and to answer questions. And I, you know, what I would share is I really appreciate, once again, kind of the opportunity to kind of talk through those decision points, not just for this, but for any time we need to redeploy resources. You know, we, I want to kind of focus a little bit, just very quickly, on what resources were present in Fells Point last weekend, and also how we strategically redeploy on what can sometimes be a minute-by-minute or hour-by-hour basis. So, last week, as a result of both continued large crowds of pedestrians and the two shooting incidents that I mentioned earlier, several resources were available in Fells Point. These include things like continued road closures for pedestrian safety with some support from sheriff's deputies, dedication of several Southeast District officers and resources from the Baltimore Police Department, including some officers on overtime from the Southeast District wagon and officer, a post officer, and the neighborhood officer for the area. And then, we also had presence from several District Action Team detectives for one shift on Friday night and one on Saturday. We also, you know, just to kind of share, staggered the times of these deployments to get maximum coverage and visibility during peak hours in Fells Point, you know, while not pulling resources from other districts, because we know those peak hours in Fells Point are peak hours for other areas of the city as well. Importantly, we all know, though, that the presence of a police officer is not guaranteed to prevent a shooting, unfortunately. To truly prevent violence and make our city safer, we must leverage all of the resources available to address social, environmental, and structural contributors to violence. I want to assure the members of the council and of the public that the administration is completely committed to developing comprehensive approaches to violence prevention citywide, but especially in those areas where violence is most prevalent and has been present for years and decades. This actually is exactly why Director Jackson from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and her team, has spent the past several months presenting and collecting feedback from communities throughout Baltimore on the city's violence reduction plan. But let me be clear, equitably delivering services throughout Baltimore is a work in progress. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. This work is requiring intentionality and accountability. Every week, the administration is tracking and reviewing how we, how and where we use and deliver resources across the city through various mechanisms. These include Police Stat, Clean Stat, Direct Analysis, and one-on-one check-ins with agency heads. A few examples of this. Every week, we review our performance on open service requests near every single shooting scene. So specifically, what we do is we review our performance on things like on-time delivery for open service requests that fall within 500 feet of a shooting incident. We're reviewing this for several reasons. One, we want to make sure that when a tragic incident happens, we're wrapping our arms around the community. But more importantly, we're also looking to determine where we're falling behind and how we can improve. We track this every single week and seek to improve every week. Every other week at Police Stat, the administration reviews everything from where our police cars are equipped with license plate readers are in each district, to gun seizures, to the type and quality of foot patrol or other proactive work that's occurring in each of our police districts. We conduct deep-dive reviews of shooting incidents to review what our activity looked like in both the weeks before and those in the immediate aftermath. This type of after-action review tells us how we can change and adapt going forward. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, improving our service delivery will be an iterative process. We're constantly reviewing and adapting our approach to service to improve the lives and safety of Baltimoreans. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to share a bit more about some of our discretionary resources and how they're deployed throughout the city. As I mentioned earlier, we don't often have an audience of 700 people to talk about these decisions in the moment, and we look forward to answering your questions today and continuing to partner with each and every one of you as we create a safer Baltimore for everyone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Snitzer. Just real quick to address, to address one of the main points behind why we're all here today, I guess the concerns that many members of the council have been fielding. Can you speak to the citizens about the resources that were shifted to Fells Point that particular night? How it took away or did not take away from resources in their individual neighborhoods and districts? And can you also speak to, I guess, the strategy moving forward as it relates to Fells Point? And any direct or indirect impact of resources in their neighborhoods and their communities?
Absolutely. So, you know, what I would, what I would share, you know, and I'll also invite Michelle and Lieutenant Colonel Brown to elaborate if I get any of the details wrong. So, in terms of Fells Point, our deployment was specifically focused on leveraging what we have available in the Southeast District. One thing that we did add last weekend is the addition, like I mentioned, for two shifts of a citywide DAT team. What that does is selects one DAT team detective from different districts and deploys them kind of strategically throughout the city. We use this initiative very often. In fact, we had a citywide DAT initiative in another area of the city last night, and we'll be redeploying them in a different area next, this coming weekend. So, that's what I would share is like not those, that's not a resource that is being removed from any specific neighborhood. That's something that we leverage to move around from place to place. In terms of going forward, our plan, again, is to leverage what we have in the Southeast District. You know, one thing that we tried to do, and I know that APD was very thoughtful and intentional about, is making sure that, for example, the Southeast District DAT team was still out along the Monument Street corridor and in Highland Town, and continuing to do work throughout the rest of the district, so that all of our resources weren't completely contained in one footprint. For this coming weekend, you know, I don't know that we have a finalized plan. Like I mentioned, I do know that we intend for those DAT officers to be redeployed to a different area. Again, kind of focused on intelligence gathering for a different area of the city. We will be having some additional kind of neighborhood officers in the district, those are in the Fells Point area. Those will not be pulled from any other areas, any other deployments around the city. Michelle or Lieutenant Colonel, is there anything you can, you want to add?
Good afternoon, for the record, Michelle Wurzberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. Deputy Mayor, you covered it actually really, really well, and I don't, I don't have anything additional to add.
Lieutenant Colonel, you good, or do you have anything to add?
Just, just to, I guess, give reference in exactly where they want to be, because we did have that incident yesterday in the western. That is where we're looking to deploy. Now, normally, publicly, we don't really like to say where we're going to have some of these, you know, these extra resources, just because of those bad actors. We don't want to alert them, but for the sake of the hearing, I'll share that.
Understood. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel, and thank you Deputy Mayor for kind of going over that. I think that citywide flex team makes total sense, and it's that level of communication that I think is just good for us to have, to provide back to the citizens, and ultimately, kind of the basis of why we're all here today. Before we move to any council questions, I know that there was other agencies involved and deployed, maybe in different ways, in response to Fells Point. Not that you all have to speak up, is there anyone from DOT or DPW or from the Liquor Board that would like to speak up? Again, I'm not asking you, but if you have anything of value to add at this point, you know, I'll provide the opportunity for you to speak. I saw you sit up, Liam, would you like to speak?
Just wanted to say, very briefly, just from the perspective of DOT, it's a little unique for us in Fells Point, because Fells Point Square is a DOT property. So, it's technically right-of-way. So, DOT has, you know, municipal control over that, as opposed to what might be assumed like rec and parks. Just wanted to add that.
Understood, thank you. Are there any other agencies that would like to speak at this time? I see your hand, Blindi, Nicholas Blindi from Liquor Board, if you could talk.
Thanks, Mr. President. For the record, Nicholas Blindi, Deputy Executive Secretary of the Baltimore City Board of Liquor License Commissioners.
Sorry for not giving your formal title. I apologize.
For the record, so I just want to note that, you know, for the Liquor Board, we have a citywide resource plan that is based on our licensed establishments. Fells Point has a large number of licensees in a very limited geographic area. So, it's already built into our plan for Fells Point to, you know, get the level of attention that it normally does because of just the amount of public and amount of establishments are there. And we have been working hand and glove for months now with the police department, with the State Controller's Office, who controls alcohol statewide as well, and working in coordination. Obviously, the Liquor Board controls what happens on a licensed premises. The police and the controller have jurisdiction elsewhere, and just want the council president, the public, the members of the council to know that, you know, we continue to do that. We do it with existing resources, right? It's, we know, for example, when St. Patrick's Day occurs, when those celebrations occur, we shift our resources to those large permitted gatherings. Same is what happens on Halloween, you know, or the day after Thanksgiving, the day, the night before Thanksgiving. The typical days that everyone in Baltimore City knows and expects licensed establishments to be busy. And we know that, fellas, when the weather gets warmer, you know, folks like to enjoy it. So, we'll continue doing what we do and enjoying our partnership with all the city agencies and working, as Deputy Mayor Snitzer said, to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Blindi. Are there any additional agencies that would like to speak up at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn it to the council. Are there any council members with any specific questions for the agencies? I see the hand of Chairman Stokes, Chairman Stokes, if you could proceed.
My question is, I guess, what happened in Fells Point with the business? I understand exactly what happened there, but my question would be, that's been happening all throughout the city, all through my neighborhood and my constituency, and where was the resources then? My question is to the Deputy Mayor. I know Commissioner Harrison was on TV. He said he had nine additional police. So, I want, if you used the police that were already there in Southeast, which is part of our district, where did the nine extra police come from?
Absolutely, and I want to clarify, I don't know specifically the officers who were a part of that citywide DAT team. So, that's that citywide DAT team that I had mentioned earlier. So, they were pulled, like I mentioned, for two. And Councilmember, I think you're absolutely right that, you know, part of, part of what we're learning from this process is, is that, you know, part of what we need to do within kind of reasonable expectations for not giving too much away is being forthright about when we redeploy those resources throughout the city. So, for example, as Lieutenant Colonel Brown mentioned earlier, that same team will be in the Western District this evening. Those are not, you know, we're not taking nine officers from a patrol post, for example. This is, this is a strategy that we use all the time. We redeployed this, this team, for example, for, I believe it was several weeks in the Southwest District, a few, a few months ago, when we had a surge of shootings down there. Similarly, we've redeployed, for example, our mobile metro unit to the Northwest District when we had a surge in carjackings up there. I think a lot of, at least from my perspective, my big takeaway is that as we're doing this, we need to be very upfront and communicative, in particular with our partners on the council, to share, you know, that we understand, we too are concerned, and to share, to the extent we can, what steps have been taken to make sure that when incidents of violence occur throughout the city, that we're responding appropriately, that we're not stripping resources from other parts of the city, but that we're strategically using what is available to us in our discretion to supplement the district's strength.
Mr. President, can I ask one question?
The floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Next question is, I have met with a lot of my majors in my district, because I want to find out what kind of partners they have and, you know, that they partner with, because I have the data for all my community districts, and most of them either assault or domestic violence. We need that kind of services that I need in my district, and I'm sure my colleagues are talking about, because we not going to wrest our way out of this? You can get all the police you want, but the community cannot be the police. We have to address the underlying issues. My question is, how can I get more services? We dealing with assault and domestic violence, not just in my district, but I got the data, I got the data. So, how do now, not just my district, again, but of our other colleagues, we dealing with those kind of underlying issues that we need to be addressed and partner with the community to address those kind of issues? Because it has not, I got all the data, but I don't see the resources.
Councilman Stokes, I really appreciate that question. It's something that's really concerning to me, certainly, especially in the wake of the pandemic. We've seen an increase in domestic violence, and we know that, that domestic violence is prevalent throughout our city. So, what I would share is, we are actively reviewing with the Baltimore Police Department, our partners at House of Ruth, and a few other places, you know, repeat locations. Locations where police are called multiple times for domestic incidents to ensure that, again, we're providing wraparound services. I would also share that, you know, a part of the work that Director Jackson and her team are doing is to really kind of do an assessment of what our available community partners are that are, that are able to provide services. And again, I'm sorry for the background noise. And to make sure that we're identifying the gaps, both geographically and, you know, demographically in how we're getting resources out to the, to the community, be that House of Ruth or other service partners. I really look forward to, I'd love to connect after, after this hearing, and certainly with you, Councilman Stokes, and with anyone on the council, to talk a little bit about some thoughts we have around, around domestic violence, and also starting to look at alternative dispatch options for that as well. We're very early on in that process. But, you know, again, to your point, we, we're not going to necessarily police our way out of this problem. We do, however, want to be very, very cautious that, you know, if violence has been used, that we're making sure that where appropriate, police are being dispatched and they're getting the speed.
Can I just jump in there just for a moment? Councilman Stokes, that was a really great question. And we had a hearing before the council this week about that topic, violence against women. And I believe there is a hearing coming up on the 30th specifically about domestic violence. But what we talked at great length about this week is, we have, we have advocates, victim advocates who work with our detectives. We try to solicit referrals. So, if there are folks in the community who know that there is a household where domestic violence is occurring, you know, we want to get that information so that our victim advocates can work with the victim, help them identify resources, develop a safety plan. If possible, get them out of that, that particular house and into a safe housing. Make sure that they get all of the resources that they need. So, if you, you said you have a lot of information about that. If we could connect, I can put together a meeting between you and the major in charge of our special investigation, who manages that particular team, so that we can identify those households and then try to intervene to prevent some of that violence.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought, also, Madam Vice President, do you have any questions or concerns to raise?
Yes, I guess, just to piggyback on Councilman Stokes, and just generally for the entire council, I think it's important that you, and I guess this is coming from me being Chair of Community and Economic Development, and I didn't hear a strategy, basically a neighborhood strategy based on economic development and investing in getting jobs and structured activities for our young people. I think that that's so important, and I think it's, we need to also include and create an equity-type template that's standard for each individual district. Because even though a lot of our districts have similarities, we also have several differences. And as was constantly mentioned, we have neighborhoods that have been going through this since the 70s, or even before then. So, it's very important that we focus on, the police is definitely important, but we, these other things have to include economic development strategies. Would you, would you like to comment on that, Sunny?
Yes, thank you so much for raising that, Vice President Middleton. And I have to apologize for not addressing that earlier, earlier in my remarks. You're absolutely right. And, and you know, what I would share very candidly with this group is, I wish I personally were an expert on, on economic development and really focusing on some of these things. I'm not, and so I'm extremely grateful to be supported by my colleagues in the economic development portfolio, but also in the equity, health, and human services space. You know, we currently have work groups being led by people a lot smarter than I am on ensuring equitable division of programming, but also on focusing on, for example, creating safe and thriving Main Streets. And that's across the board with our Main Streets, with every single site. You know, we'll be announcing some initiatives with that soon as well. And I, you know, I really appreciate you raising that point, because you're absolutely right. That is, that is the underlying kind of root, root cause here. And I think that's a, that's absolutely a huge part of what we will be focusing on, you know, both in the violence reduction strategies, but also in kind of, as we think about, you know, use of our ARP funds as well, and really taking an equity lens with that. But I want to thank you for raising that, because it's, it's something that I failed to mention earlier.
Hey, no problem. Thank, we're all, hey, we're all in this together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next, we're going to go to Chairman Conway, Chair of Safety and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I actually had a different question I was going to ask first, but two questions. But because of Vice President Middleton's question, I'm going to ask my second question first.
And to the council members, we're not in budget here, and so if you got a couple of questions, let's just get them out before we turn to the public. So, if you have some additional questions, you can get them in now.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first question is, it kind of came about as a result of Deputy Mayor, you saying that we review all SRS within 500 feet of a shooting. That, that's awesome. I thought really, really helpful. Following up on Vice President Middleton's point, are we thinking about the social services that we're providing in response to a shooting? Thinking about housing, we're thinking about unemployment, we're thinking about recreation, and do we track the services that we're able to provide before and after a shooting? I believe that in, in some instances, that may be helpful in beginning to ramp down some of the problems that we may see in neighborhoods, if we can take away some of those pressures. So, I wanted to put that out to you. I don't, maybe a suggestion, maybe a question, if you're already doing it. But is that something we can look into?
Councilmember Conway, that's a question after my own heart. As a former statistician myself, and of course you are as well, certainly tracking and data is a huge part of this. You know, what I would mention is, we are, you know, I think still building the infrastructure to be able to, across the board, track those things. We are, however, taking a closer look at how we can track the life cycle of services that are delivered. You know, I think something that you'll, that we'll be hearing a little bit about in the next few weeks as a part of the consent decree is kind of a process that we're developing to track services and outcomes from behavioral health-related calls. And again, not just the outcomes from the call, but from the service referrals and kind of tracking that through the system in a way that protects the privacy and identity of folks who have engaged with services. So we're in the process of developing that as a pilot. And I think that would likely be kind of the baseline from which we would kind of lift that practice. You know, as you know, the quality of our data, in particular in the social service space and how that pairs with some of our administrative data that comes from things like CAD or records management. Sometimes it doesn't always line up, which is why we're kind of starting with one small piece. But I could not agree more. I think that's absolutely something that we need to be doing. I would say, you know, while we aren't, while I don't feel we're currently in a place to be able to do that across the board with, for example, all call types, you know, I certainly want to praise Director Jackson and her team who are really developing kind of tracking mechanisms within the programs that are operated within Monty. And I know I'm leaving out, I'm thinking about the offices that I work with most commonly, but I know that several other offices throughout the city do that as well. But we're looking to do something a little more kind of cross-sectional as well. But great question. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other question that I was going to ask first, but I guess still sort of flows is, can you give me a little bit of insight on some of the differences in the responses? I mean, we, of course, had the recent shooting in West Baltimore and comparatively, you know, the shooting that we had in the recent violence that we've seen in Fells Point. Can you give me a little bit of insight on the difference in the responses and why we have a difference in those responses? So we can understand maybe the difference in strategy and how we approach each of those respective situations.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that, you know, our approach kind of changes. It adapts from week to week and from incident to incident. And in a couple of minutes, I'm going to turn it over to BPD as well. But I can give a couple of examples. So, you know, one of the reasons why last week we focused on a citywide DAT initiative in Fells Point is that we knew that Fells Point is a gathering place for people from all over the city. So we had detectives who were in the area who have intelligence of, you know, groups that may be operating in East Baltimore or Northwest Baltimore. We had people who were kind of gathering information from all over the city. And, you know, knowing that we'd had two shooting incidents, we're kind of looking at things through that lens. You know, the one, another response that we do periodically, so for example, in the wake of a shooting, we sometimes will hold over officers on mandatory overtime. So that if we know that we have several officers who are holding down a crime scene, we know that we're going to have adequate patrol coverage and even increased patrol coverage to make sure in an area that's just out of shooting, you know, we're not missing any calls, but actually we also are showing an increased presence. Sometimes, you know, if we're worried or have some intelligence that, you know, we may be worried about something. So for example, while we've been talking quite a bit about Fells Point last weekend, we also had overtime initiatives in every single police district last weekend that effectively doubled our patrol strength for our peak hours in each district at least one night last weekend. Again, kind of factoring in all of our, and I'm trying to be a little bit cautious with my words here, so I'm not sharing a little too much, but factoring in intelligence we have of current ongoing disputes, things like that. And so our decisions are largely going to be driven based on kind of the nature of the challenge. So for example, if our challenge is foot traffic to people going to an Orioles game, that deployment is going to look very different than, you know, we've had two shootings in a close proximity and believe there are two groups that are in an active dispute. Michelle or Lieutenant Colonel, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you said it really nicely. I mean, basically, you know, with every single incident, we are constantly assessing, reassessing, trying to make decisions about deployment, both through an equity lens and through the, you know, through a lens of constitutional policing. And so we're making decisions about what sort of, what sort of skill sets we need. And so we've talked about this quite a bit now tonight is, you know, our citywide DAT team, you know, we bring those people, that particular team out when we need to gather intelligence, when we need folks who can specifically identify those violent crime drivers. The people, they need to, we need to have eyes on the ground, knowing who, you know, to look out for. It's not just any old thing or any old crime, it's specific types of crimes. And so that's how we make those decisions. But again, as Deputy Commissioner Schnitzer mentioned earlier, you know, we have a variety of flexible units that we can utilize at different times. We have the Mobile Metro Unit, we have the K-9 Team, we have SWAT, we have the Accident Investigative Unit, the Bomb Team, you know. And so it really does determine what does that specific area need? Also, what else is happening in the rest of the city? So that we can be very strategic about who goes where and making sure that we have all of our areas covered. With that, Lieutenant Colonel, do you have anything additional to add?
Just to say that, you know, all of those uncommitted resources, you know, we are looking at violence in real time. So sometimes we will have those fights. Again, publicly, we may not always say, hey, listen, we're sending an abundance amount of extra resource to a district to stabilize it only because, again, those bad actors do operate, they do follow social media. And what we're learning is through social media and social networks, they are connecting in certain places that normally we would not have thought they would operate in. Like we may have bad actors from one district that's now connected to another district. And they're not just there for the purpose of committing violence or anything like that. They're now operating together. So now there's spider wave across the city. So, you know, utilizing not only our uncommitted resources just gives us just a little bit more where we can deploy and still have our patrol services not affected. That's the huge part. But it also gives an underlay to those investigative measures that we need, you know. So with our DAT teams, most of them are very versed in a lot of our intelligence because they share back and forth all the time because of those social networks now that we're starting to uncover. So the better that we get at this intel sharing very fast, but having them on the ground also to be actionable, I think is the best way that, you know, the best, one of the best strategies we have. Now I do think that in some way, we can be somewhat more forthcoming in that. But of course, it's still a strategy to make sure that we're not giving up too much so that we can, you know, come up with comprehensive investigations, make sure that we're extracting the right people and that we are building those cases, you know, so that we can have more, a better conviction, you know, on the back end of it. So I just think that, you know, those committed resources we'll continue to use. We just have to find a forum where we can share some of that so that you can have a response, you know, of course, to the constituents because we are all one team. We want the same thing, you know, safer and healthier communities, not just in certain communities, but for all.
Yeah, I think in my asking that question, I really, I really want to, I really want to better understand how we're leveraging our knowledge about motives behind shootings. You know, in a bar scene, in a bar scene like Fells Point, we know folks may just be drunk and a little bit rowdy and it turns to something very quickly. We're talking about, you know, the response there may be having more eyes on the street to identify folks who may be holding guns. Whereas when we know in communities that have historically been violent or had a ton of violence, we know the pressures there are very different. We're looking at poverty, we're looking at drug dealing, we're looking at pressures on a community that, yes, we certainly need a police response, but how are we thinking about some of the social and economic responses that we can better coordinate with our police response? To make sure that we're, you know, being more thoughtful about that. So I just want to put that out there for you guys. I hope it wasn't missed, but I think it's really, really, really important that we begin to leverage those opportunities as well. Yes, our police department needs to be able to respond. Yes, it needs to be effective and efficient. We also need to begin thinking about, and not forgetting the motives behind some of these shootings. And I'm not sure what the motive was behind the shooting in West Baltimore, but if we're beginning to see trends there, understanding those motives and finding ways through social programs or otherwise to begin meeting the needs of folks in those areas, I think can go a long way towards sustainably reducing crime as well. So just want to put it out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I saw the hand of Councilman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And if you would indulge me, if I could just share briefly my own perspective on Fells Point, which I represent for my question. Clearly, every community that experiences high levels of violence needs a robust response. I think it's important to note that for Fells Point, we've been having this challenge for over a year since the pandemic started, related to, at the beginning, clubs and bars being closed, a lot of alcohol, and unfortunately, a lot of violence. And I was there last summer when five people were shot in the middle of Broadway Square. We've seen several fights and assaults culminating two weeks ago when three people were shot near the square after multiple serious assaults and fights. Unfortunately, this last weekend, gunmen lit off 20 to 30 rounds in the direction of a crowd. We also know that we've had pretty significant quality of life challenges. I do want to say I appreciate Mayor Scott's team taking the issue seriously in Fells Point and the Careful Balancing Act to ensure resources are distributed equitably. Clearly, it's critically important to have a robust response to each and every community that's crying out for help and wants to be heard. And additionally, and my colleagues mentioned this as well, but if we're going to reduce violence, we have to stem the tide of trauma that fuels it. It's why today our agencies started the citywide trainings for the Trauma Informed Care Act. My question, and I think it's to Sunny, although really I prefer I go to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety, so our Deputy Mayor Schnitzer. How can neighborhoods better partner with each other to develop strategies to prevent and respond to violence? I think it often feel like neighborhoods end up getting pitted against each other for resources. One of the things we do in Southeast is hold a monthly public safety task force with all of our communities to talk about strategies. But I'm just curious, for you all, sort of on the citywide level, what we can do to better integrate partnership between neighborhoods so that we can share best practices, resources, and try to increase safety together?
All right, had to find the unmute button. So thank you for your thoughtful question, Councilmember. You know, I think that's a really important question. I think there's a hearing coming up pretty soon about some of the citywide initiatives that we have and neighborhood-specific initiatives that focus on safety that are everything but police. I think that's one way that, you know, I'm certainly happy to make sure that that's a part of the conversation. You know, I think certainly what you mentioned about kind of coalitions of neighborhoods having conversations about public safety is absolutely a part of that. You know, that's a part of why we want to do this Main Streets Initiative, right? Is to engage all of our partners along a corridor to make sure that we're incorporating a wide swath of input into creating safe and healthy business corridors. I also, though, want to just very quickly kick it, and I'm sorry to call on you, Lieutenant Colonel, but to Lieutenant Colonel Brown to talk a little bit about our neighborhood policing plans and, you know, our pilots that are going on and what to expect from that. I think that's going to be potentially a big part of how we can really address neighborhood by neighborhood, but also as a collective, some of the concerns around kind of resource constraints and making sure that we're applying the appropriate resources where necessary and certainly those well beyond policing. We call these neighborhood policing plans, but actually they extend far beyond that. So Lieutenant Colonel, would you mind talking a little bit about the neighborhood policing plans?
Yes, so one of the biggest things about, I think, you know, the neighborhood policing plans that they will be pro-produced, and we are collaborating, of course, with communities. So it's not like the police are sitting at the table to tell a community, hey, this is the things that you need to do to make your community healthier. We went through a very robust, really, you know, very equitable lens to decide what criteria on what neighborhood we should, of course, select. Most of them are our neighborhoods that were most affected and impacted by violence, definitely have an overlay of a lot of environmental issues and concerns. And also with another layer of having some poverty and all of those issues that I think that has been mentioned here today. So the two locations that we've picked is Bay H3 Outreach, which unfortunately, you know, is where we had the incident yesterday, and then also in Curtis Bay in Brooklyn, in Brooklyn Park. Now, one of the things about, you know, about this whole response, the way that we're trying to do it, is making sure that it's BPD, of course, to bring a public safety focus, but we're really listening to what the community say their needs are to make their community better. Again, now we have all of our city agencies that's connected to this framework. So we will be sitting down together to co-collaborate how we're looking at public safety. And the biggest part of it is that the community finally has a voice. They have an input, you know, we build that capacity and also empower them to let them know that, listen, you are the staple stone and the root of your community and very well should have all of, you know, the resource and support that you need to make sure that the community looks like and feels like what community should be for you. So I think those pieces are very big. We are still in some strategy sessions right now. We just kind of sort of launched and have some kickoff launches that's still coming and forthcoming. But I think that right now, all of the response that we've gotten is, the community is already ready. They've already wrapped themselves up. They're already geared towards, hey, listen, let's start now. They're already busy in the work because they, we've already shared some of those frameworks that we're trying to do and some of the process. So it's going to be a learning curve for us, even though these are just two pilot locations. The goal is ultimately to, one, stabilize those communities, get them healthier as soon as we can, you know, addressing all of those issues again together, but very quickly being able to scale up, you know, in all of our capacity, whether it's through BPD and of course through community and most certainly through city agencies as well. So I'm looking forward for us to have great collaboration. But not only that, it helps us to build those relationships and build up our efficacy and also extend and strengthen, you know, trust amongst us together to know that, hey, listen, this is something we want to do together and we're not trying to do it separately because, again, you know, we're all community and we have to look at it from that lens.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel and Deputy Mayor. I really appreciate, again, your support. Just, I think our neighborhoods have so many tremendous assets that can be utilized for each other. We all have challenges and they're different. But I think the work that Director Jackson is doing out of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement is critically important in leading that move forward. But again, thank you and thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this point, are there any council members with additional questions or concerns? Councilman Glover, do you have a question? Could you raise your hand?
Sir, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you all for being here this evening. My question is, do we have to pay back the state for the resources that they have deployed here to Baltimore? We all know that crime is a problem in our city, you know, all across Baltimore. We also know that is a byproduct of a bigger symptom. But I want to know that, are the state active for us to pay back anything for the resources that they have deployed in a Fells Point effort?
Councilman Glover, that's a great question. I really appreciate that. So no, we've not been asked to pay back the state for the DUI checkpoints that they sent up last weekend. So what I would share is, you know, we, until, I want to say around December, January, or it may have been, actually, it may have been November, we had been partnering with Maryland State Police on semi-regular initiatives, you know, whether that's DUI checkpoints or other kind of initiatives. We were informed, kind of like I said, late 2020, that the state would not be able to continue that because of their own budget constraints. We've been in constant Um, we've been in constant contact with the state, kind of begging them to, to, to come back to the table. Um, we had a very productive meeting, uh, with the governor and his team, um, a few weeks back and actually received a, a letter in response to that. And one of our requests was some, some engagement, uh, from, um, from the, the Maryland State Police to assist us. Um, and, and in the response back, uh, you know, I, I'm paraphrasing here, but it, it said, you know, we'll do what we can to get your support. Things need to be very, um, straightforward and, um, we need to have a clear mission and a mission that aligns with the services that the Maryland State Police can, can deliver. Um, you know, Maryland State Police aren't Baltimore experts. They're, they're not necessarily going to be the, the right, right resources to help patrol neighborhoods, for example. Um, and so, you know, we, we had heard several concerns, again, not just in Fell's Point, but in other areas of the city as well, about kind of an increase, potential increase in, in drunk driving. Um, and so we, we put in a request for some assistance with DUI checkpoints. Um, they, they, uh, they obliged. And again, that, that letter back came, uh, maybe just a couple of days, um, before, before our request. Um, and we'll be continuing to request that support, you know, again, not just for the Fell's Point area, but for a lot of our heavily trafficked roadways that, that include a lot of alcohol establishments to make sure, I mean, safety is just as much about making sure that folks don't get behind the wheel when they've been drinking, um, as it is other things. And so that's how we're trying to use that leverage. That was a very long-winded way of saying we have not been asked to, to pay that, pay that back to the state and hope to continue that partnership. But again, like I said, throughout the city.
So that starts off for my next question. So, so the resources that were deployed here last week, uh, we still ended up with an individual with like letting off 40 rounds. And, uh, if the police presence, uh, was there and it wasn't effective that night, what is the plan moving forward? Because tomorrow's Friday, I'm quite sure, you know, you know, the weekend, you know, they're going to be down there partying again, but what do we have in place that would make sure that we do not have to go through what happened last week? And when I say we, you know, not just in Fell's Point, you know, I'm talking about across the city, like right here in district, uh, where I reside, the 13th District, you know, uh, we had over, within the last two weeks, maybe, uh, I want to say over 10 shootings. Um, one of them, I happened to be in a parking lot myself, um, to, uh, one of the perpetrators that went out and, and did some of the shooting. But what I, what I see is that we, we're not getting, and if we are, please direct me if I'm wrong, but we're not getting, it seems, the prompt response that we deserve here in our neighborhoods that many times are just voices aren't being heard. And again, like I tell my constituents, I'm not the police, you know, just want to take all of us on hand to, you know, to end and to change the trajectory here in our neighborhoods. But I think one of the problems that we face that I think we should ask is that we have all law enforcement, including the Baltimore City, uh, school, police, uh, the Sheriff's Department. Like we're all in this together. If they're just to patrol the area, we need the help because everybody want to feel safe in their communities.
Absolutely. I, so Councilman, I, I appreciate that, that point very much and, and I think you're absolutely right. Um, you know, I, I think there are a few different points that I'd want to respond to. And again, then I'll, I'll kind of put, um, Michelle and Lieutenant Colonel, uh, Brown in, on the, on deck circle. Um, you know, what I, what I would share in response is first, I, I want to share that I'm, I'm very sorry that that, that, that's an experience that, that constituents of your district have had over the past few weeks that's deeply concerning, obviously. Um, I think one thing I'd like to do is, is Michelle, if we could set up a, a briefing for the Councilmen on what we have been able to deploy, um, and, and also what our plan is going forward. Um, you know, we, we do regularly make requests of, of other law enforcement agencies. I do think, as I mentioned a little earlier, I think one of the biggest challenges, um, you know, that we face is, is to your point, sometimes having a police officer right there isn't going to be the solution. And I, you know, I, I, uh, hesitate to, to, um, I, that I have, you know, that I have the, the long-term solution. I think, you know, part of, part of what we've been doing and kind of working across the city on this violence reduction plan is identifying some of these gaps. Um, but I absolutely hear your point on, you know, making sure that, that resources be a patrol officers, you know, when we engage with the Sheriff's Department, uh, when we engage with school police, making sure that, that those resources are going where they are going to be most effective, uh, and, and where we will see the most impact and those neighborhoods that, that need to see that impact. Um, and again, I think part of what I'm hearing and learning from this process is in addition to making sure, you know, continuing some of that accountability work that the administration is doing, we also need to circle back and, and make sure that we're communicating in particular with our partners on the council when we are doing special initiatives. Again, to the extent it's appropriate to do so, to, to make sure that that's being communicated so that you can share your concerns have been heard. Here's, I, I can tell you what I can tell you and here's what it is. Um, because that's information that, that we can equip you with to help kind of rebuild some of that trust. Um, but Michelle or, or Lieutenant Colonel, do you want to add?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So first and foremost, you know, we want to make sure that our commanders are in direct relationship with you, Councilmen, with your constituents. If your constituents are complaining about the level of service that we are providing, that is problematic. You shouldn't be hearing that. And so what I'd like to do is, you know, maybe let's first you and I sit down and talk about what is happening, what the complaints are, and let's identify a strategy, you know, whether it's a, an additional meeting with certain communities, if it's a meeting with you, let's figure that out because that is unacceptable.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
At this time, are there any additional questions or comments or concerns from, uh, Councilmembers?
I just have one, Mr. President.
Who is your man, Vice President?
Um, you know, as I was listening to, um, all of these different initiatives, I guess this question is for Michelle Wiesberger and Lieutenant Colonel Brown. Um, because we're doing these partnerships with, um, other law enforcement, is there any new specific training that the police is setting up for all of the law enforcement together, even though they represent different entities? We, we all want the law enforcement to be on the same page. So is there any new innovative, um, specific training that you can mention that you're doing now to make sure everyone's on the same page within law, within the different law enforcement segments?
So thank you for that, um, Vice President Middleton. I think that, um, Michelle may be frozen is, is looking like so. Um, I think that that's always one of our primary concerns when we are asking for partnerships to come in, you know, and assist us because of course we are under consent decree and we do operate very differently, right? Everything that we do right now is, is equitable, is about procedural justice, fair and impartial policing and constitutional policing. But I think that the thing that we have to understand too, like all of our partners that are here, like our sheriffs and also school police, they go through our academy. So they are well aware and well versed of our training, our policies and what is expected of us and how we should, of course, conduct ourselves in this realm of reform, right? Um, when we do bring on like Maryland State Police or, uh, DOT, when they do come and assist us, most of it is most certainly in their skillset. Their skillset for the most part is traffic and that's where they help and assist us the most when it comes to DUI initiatives, you know, really on our main thoroughfares because we do know that, of course, with COVID and that, and that increase of most people less traveling, we have had probably the most fatal accidents occurring on our main thoroughfares, you know, in single car accidents, not necessarily that they struck other cars. So, um, I would say for the most part, yes, absolutely, because our partners that are here, that are local with us go through the same exact training and academy as we do, even in service. So they're very well aware of all the policies, reform and even, you know, everything that we're doing. For the most part, they're mirroring all of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Vice President. Uh, uh, Councilman Stok, Chairman Stokes, you have a question?
I just have a suggestion, um, um, Deputy Commissioner, um, have, have the school police...
You're saying Lieutenant Colonel Brown?
Yes, have the school police, the city police and, um, the sheriff office ever sat in the same room to talk about how we can address the, this violence in the city? Cause I don't know if that happened, but if it did, if it have not, I would suggest, and I would like to be a part of it because we have all that law enforcement and if we, all three of them not sitting in the room together, because we can use the city, um, uh, police right now because school is closing, but I want all those three law enforcement to sit in the same room talking about how we address some of the violence here in the city.
I think that question was to you, Lieutenant Colonel, or maybe Michelle, you can answer.
Uh, I, I'm happy to, to jump in there. So Councilman, thank you for the question. Coordination is key, you know, relationships are key. You know, we are constantly interacting with our partners, uh, at the local lev, level, whether it is the sheriff's office, the, uh, school police or at the state level and our federal partners as well. We are constantly, uh, strateg, strategizing with them about what is happening, how can they assist us? You know, and, and what is it that we need to do, you know, moving forward to make the city safer?
Can I, can I just? I'm sorry.
Councilman Stokes, can I just piggyback off of that, please?
You gotta ask the President that. I'm not, you know.
Yeah, Councilman Stokes, are you finished?
No, I want to, I real quick, I want to just say that because with, with, um, Chief Hamm, when we had some issues in my district during, when the school was closed a while ago, he was able along with the sheriff office to provide some resources for them to break in and crime was going on. That's why I wanted to make a suggestion because if that's happening, we as council people don't know, there's a, they all sit in the same room talking about crime in the city. Michelle, if you didn't say that, I, I don't know it. I don't know as a council person, but I wouldn't know that because it's not transparent. It's not passed to the, down to the council said they all sit in a room and using each other's resources.
Yeah, so, um, so it is absolutely happening and there are standing meetings that we have, again, at the local, the state and the federal level. And no, you know, we do not necessarily invite external non-law enforcement partners to the table because we are talking about sensitive information. We're talking about criminals. We're talking about deployment strategies that, you know, have to be held very close to the, to the vets. But, uh, you know, I, I can assure you that those things are happening regularly every single day.
No, real quick, I'm not saying I need to be there, but I don't know that that's actually happening, that's all.
Uh, and, uh, Councilman Glover, do you have? Oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, hold on, hold on, Glover. Go ahead, Michelle.
You know, so again, you know, we have the heads of the agencies that are interacting. We have folks lower down the rung, like the deputy commissioners who are sharing intelligence, making strategies around deployment. But then we have situations where we will have commanders of districts in the city coordinating with commanders of districts outside of the city. So for example, you know, on the, the Brooklyn and, uh, the Brooklyn, uh, Curtis Bay down there on, in the Southern District, we have regular conversations with the commander of the Northern District for Anarundel County, you know? And so again, we, we're doing that across the city because someone said earlier, crime does not have a jurisdiction. They don't, you know, criminals don't see the boundaries. They just see targets, you know? So we have got to be interacting with each other and strategizing so that we're not just playing this game where we're moving it back and forth. And Councilman, you know me from my Middleton, uh, my, uh, Midtown days, right? And so, you know, in, in that instance, you know, we had off-duty police officers that we employed to help, uh, provide public safety services to the, the residents of the district. And so we would interact very regularly with the commanders of the Northern District, uh, commanders of the Central District and portions of the Eastern District, as well as, you know, the University of Baltimore, the, you know, the University of Maryland Midtown Campus, you know, all of these individuals who have public safety responsibilities. It is, you know, with this department, we are just taking it to a whole nother level because we have got to do that in order to leverage our resources, to share intelligence and to, you know, to, 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 to be strategic about what we are doing.
Thank you. And, uh, Councilman Glover?
Just to kind of piggyback off of, uh, Councilman Stokes and, Miss Michelle, I think you could probably answer this question is basically, I remember early on in the conversation, it was that, you know, we're trying to kind of communicate and, you know, network with these other law enforcement. Do you think that is a budget issue, meaning, uh, you know, for those individuals to be deployed to help us in Baltimore City, that will be tapping into their budgets and they're not able to, uh, you know, allow us to utilize their, uh, you know, police agency because of that reason?
That is above my pay. So I'm going to punt that to Sunny or we'll, if she can answer, we'll get back.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a combination issue. I, I know that has certainly been, um, a concern that's been raised in the past. Um, and, you know, we try to do what we can to, um, make sure that we're operating in a way that's going to be as economically, uh, feasible for all of our partners, including our, our own police department. But I think, you know, if it's okay...
We're losing lives, we're losing lives. And, and I think, uh, we see it across the city, we, we leave in lives, uh, 300 a year. And if it's a budget issue where individuals are not deploying resources, um, to Baltimore because of monies, then I think it is very important that we all come together as far as those agencies, they come up with a plan, a plan to end the violence in Baltimore. Like this has to stop. This has been going on since, since I was a kid. And, you know, the resources are here, the police is here, but what is the plan to ensure that Baltimore residents are safe? And I think part of that plan is to have those agencies together. I'm willing to sit down, I know many of my colleagues are willing to sit down and that we got to come up with some type of monetary budget. I don't know what it is you got to do. The thing about it, I just know we got to stop crime. It's getting warm, it's going to be a hot summer and you know what happens with the hot weather when it come to inner-city youth? We need to stop it now. So please, if you can come back to us soon with those other agencies, so we could come up with a plan and a strategic plan to really carve the crime in Baltimore City, please help us do that.
So if I could just intervene just for a moment, Councilman, um, as a, during the budget process, um, we were asked to provide briefings on our summer deployment plan, which we have been doing, uh, all week, frankly. Um, during the budget hearing, I sent a message out to the entire council asking, uh, you know, for folks to let me know if they were interested in such a briefing. Um, I can, uh, moving forward, since you've expressed interest, I will, Shannon Conway and I will certainly make sure that you have a briefing with the Commissioner, the Deputy Commissioner and Colonel Jones.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmen. Uh, at this point, we're going, we're going to turn it over to public testimony. Uh, we're going to take, um, the testimony for those who've signed up using a computer. Uh, we're going to go to you first. Uh, please, please utilize the raise hand function, uh, to indicate that you wish to testify. Uh, we're going to start with you first. Next, we'll go through all the users who have called in, um, uh, who just called in. Uh, attendees who have called in cannot be identified by name, um, but will be unmuted and the council committee, uh, staff, uh, will, once they do that... and the council committee, uh, staff, uh, will, once they do that unmuting, you'll hear two beeps, um, that will notify you that you begin to speak. If you wish to testify, again, please state your name at that point. Um, uh, if a caller does not want to provide testimony, they simply need to just stay on the line and do absolutely nothing from there. So at this point, uh, we're going to turn it over to any public testimony. So, uh, for the purpose of, um, the city agencies as well, as well as council members, we didn't go in for about an hour and 15 minutes. Um, we're going to give two minutes, uh, for folks to raise their hand. Uh, they're, they're going, we're going to cycle through that list. If we do not have any, um, folks interested in, in, uh, testifying from the general public perspective, uh, then, uh, we will, uh, conclude the hearing. Okay, while we're waiting for, uh, if, if there's any members who have joined by computer, we're going to cycle through the call-ins right now. So if we could cycle through, um, the call-ins. Remember if, uh, when you hear the two beep, beeps, that means you're unmuted. If you would like to testify, please state your name and then we'll go from there.
Caller number one? Hello? Caller number two, testimony, comments? Caller number three?
Well, again, the purpose for us convening today, um, as you can see, a lot of questions on the council, but more importantly, a lot of questions that the council has been fielding from our communities. This attention has received a tremendous amount of, of coverage, uh, and, uh, has, and, and as you know, uh, you know, many folks have been concerned and worried about violence like we are every single summer, summer in the city of Baltimore. Uh, this seemed a little different, uh, and that was the point of this particular hearing. Uh, we wanted the administration, we wanted the agencies to be able to come forward and talk about the thoughtfulness associated with their plan, uh, not only dealing with Fells Point, but also trying to work, uh, and deal with individual issues throughout, uh, the city of Baltimore. I think it's been stated on several occasions tonight, um, there is not one agency that's going to get us out of this issue. There's not one silver bullet that is going, not going to get us out of this issue. It's really us collectively coming together. We also know, uh, that the, the idea of developing ways of getting to our children before they get to the criminal justice system and developing a city that's not an incubator for violence, um, but more a producer of opportunity for all folks, uh, is what we ultimately need to achieve. And we're fighting a lot of historical, uh, demons. We're fighting a lot of disproportionate amount of access and, and resources in many of our communities. Uh, and when you conflate those things and you look at a map of where violence is, uh, we see it hand in hand. So, um, again, I know I am preaching to the choir. I know many folks have, have talked about this time and time again, um, but that was the urgency of this particular matter. I think that we provided the citizens access and transparency and understanding and knowing exactly what this, the administration, uh, and BPD and the other agencies have done to ensure that they, uh, their needs are met. Hold on, I'm, I'm receiving one additional question. Yeah, so, um, I think we're going to, uh, move on. Again, thank you, um, for taking time out of your busy schedules to all the employees of the city of Baltimore. Uh, at this point, we're going to conclude the hearing. Baltimore, we love you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.